Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Glen's Falls County Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. It's seven thirty and time for a regular session. Today, we have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Clark.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to flag the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate, and just as far.
Feels kind of anticlimactic without a, without a group of students singing the National Anthem. We'll open the council meeting up to public comment. If you have a comment for the council and would like to be heard, please come to the microphone. Tell us your name and your address, please.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Kayla.
Just coming with an update from the Pride Festival this last weekend. We had our festival from twelve PM to four PM. We had about a thousand attendees for the whole day. So it was a great event, and thank you to all of you for your support, and thank you for speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to come forward with public comment?
Hi, my name's Patty Simone. I don't think this is on.
Is it on? All right.
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
Not working, Peggy?
No, but I can speak loud. My name is Patty Simone. I'm the part-time executive director of the Feeder Canal Alliance in town. And I just wanted to introduce myself and let you know that I'm looking forward to having a great partnership with the Common Council and, I don't know if the word is addressing, but in just planning for different possibilities as well as possibly taking care of some things that we know that could improve, make some improvements. My entire goal was to get more folks to know about the Feeder Canal before I was involved with it. I didn't know, and I was, you know, living in the area for four years. So I've put together rack cards. I'm distributing them all throughout the region so that more people, including at the exit seventeen on the north way, the Welcome Center. So more people come here and more tourists are involved, as well as day trippers, I call them. You know, people that are always in the area, but they're like, what can we do? Something different. I want to go somewhere different. And then we become the place, the destination that they come to Glen's Falls. So like I said, and I don't know if you guys saw this, but I had this downstairs in the entryway. We're going to be having more community-focused events. We were very lucky to have this one, our first one, at Havlin Cove Park. And it was a small event, but it was partnershiped with Amorak Youth Group. And more partnerships like that so that we can help other nonprofits fulfill their mission of doing community outreach, providing educational program, and just fun. Like we had kids rock painting, you know, things like that. And also then telling their parents about the Feeder Canal and different educational programs. So again, I just wanted to say hi, introduce myself, and thank you so much for all the great work that you're doing and, you know, just looking forward to being involved to, you know, see more exciting, positive things happen and come to fruition in Glen's Falls. So I want to leave this with you.
Please.
Can I leave this right here?
Yeah.
Or give it to you, either way? Leave it there. Thank you.
Do you, do we have some of your rack cards up on our tables already in both the lobby end and the second floor?
You know, I don't know if I have the rack cards there, but I'll get them there. I put the maps out because a lot of people are looking for maps, but...
So both, if you've got them?
Oh, I've got them. I have them in my car.
And we'll also replenish them anytime that you let us know. I know that we have a secret hiding place underneath the table on the second floor where we keep extras, and then as it starts to run low, we'll fill it. So let us know.
Okay, terrific. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Howdy. Hi. First, I just want to say thank you to the council for all the help that you give, the collaborative for our events, and they've been great this year and they've been growing. And so thank you for that. And Take a Bite starts July fifth, every Wednesday then through August ninth. Five to seven, so come on down and taste some good food.
Fantastic.
Yeah, see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy, for all your work leading the collaborative, too. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm a few hip hipperays this evening and then a special request that I want to make. My name is Kay Bruce, and I live in Glen's Falls. I want to thank you for being so welcoming to all the kiddos who showed up to sing the National Anthem. And there are many parents who came and took a record of what they were doing because those poor kids are going to have to look at that for the rest of their lives from those proud parents. But it was really nice to see you engage young people in governance. It's a really important first step for them. They may not be able to vote for you yet, but someday they will. Secondly, I want to thank all of you for the work you're doing with the ward meetings and the surveys, and your reaching out to ask your constituents, the residents, what they think. I went to Mary Gooden's ward meeting. Ben was there. Jim Clark was there. It was fantastic. You not only listened to all of us, but you came with lots and lots of information, great details when people asked a question. So I think people left with a lot of confidence. Yesterday, I went for a walk down to Murray Street Park. I said, hmm, you know, Mary talks about it. I think I'm just going to go down and check it out, what's going on down there. And there was another man who also was doing the same thing. I don't know his name, but I recognized him from the Ward five meeting. And we had a very long conversation about how appreciative he was about that meeting, about the work being done in the park and the work that the council does. So on his behalf, I thank you, hip hipperay from him, whoever he is, and the same from me. I have a request to ask of you. I took the time to look up the County Council rules and responsibilities that you have. They were lengthy. I know that because I come to all of your meetings. So I know all of the hard work that you do. But you, Mayor Collins, and all of you sitting here several years ago did something very unusual. It was a very unusual kind of leadership that you seldom see anymore. It was a time when this country was denying the people the right to enter the U.S. if they lived in seven Muslim-dominated countries. For those who track antisemitism in New York State, it was at the highest level it has ever been. More than forty-seven hate groups are in New York State right now, including in upstate New York. I would like to say the world is a wonderful place. I tell myself that every day, but I also have to be factual, and it's not. There is a lot of hatred. But you, Mayor Collins, stood up in a common council meeting and read something brought to you by faith leaders. It was a proclamation of peace and reconciliation. And I just want to read, if I, if I may, just part of that reconciliation proclamation. "All, all members of the community, all, are invited to attend a special meeting on May fifteenth, twenty twenty-two with leaders from the Christian, Jewish, and Muslim communities to celebrate our common humanity, to join in love and fellowship, to value and respect differences, and vow to go forth as one people into the greater community with hearts strengthened by a deepened love of power, justice, and friendship." That's remarkable. That's what I call visionary leadership. You don't see it very often, and I'm very proud that all of you reminded me, just one of many residents here, what people who step up can do and the impact they can have. For those of you who might not remember that event, we who had organized it had hoped that twenty-five people might show up. More than two hundred people heard that invitation that you, Mayor Collins, issued and came to that service. You planted a tree of peace and reconciliation. I walked by it the other day. Its roots are deeper, its branches are thick. It's full of leaves. It's healthy. Peace and reconciliation in Glen's Falls. You have a message. I would like you to bring it to the County Board of Supervisors meeting tomorrow evening during the public comment period because the public needs to know that Glen's Falls has the kind of visionary leaders that can make a difference in the world. If refugees come suddenly to this area, if hatred emerges again in this area, whatever the problem is, I have confidence in watching you, listening to you, the things that you're doing in this community and that proclamation, that you can be visionary leaders, and I ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. So, hold on, Jeff, we'll just, we'll close if there's no one else who'd like to make public comment. So then the next step on our agenda is to ask Economic Development Director Jeff Flag to come and talk about projects that he has in front of you. Sorry that you're, it says one for this meeting, but I...
That's all right, Jeff. It was a, it was an ad hoc organization. Yes, if you didn't have anybody here as a department head to speak, I'll be the department head, and I'll speak. I just wanted to mention one of the items that's, a resolution is on the agenda tonight. This is a project called a Community Hydro Project. The members of the Sustainability Committee are very familiar with this. And in fact, there was an LOI a couple of months ago, I think back in February, maybe early March, that we, that the council passed to sort of pursue this. Just to clarify what this project is and why we sort of chosen this particular project. For those of you who are familiar with community solar, right? A community solar project is one in which an individual or organization or business or potentially a government could sort of enter into an agreement with a solar farm and sort of subscribe to the, to the output or a piece of the output from that facility. So instead of putting solar panels on your house if you don't like them or if they don't fit, if there's too much shade, you instead subscribe to a, a large-scale solar farm somewhere in the state of New York. And then you're sort of assigned a number of panels that sort of correspond to the amount of energy that you use. You then get a credit on your bill for the, for that power that's produced. The city looked at some of those possibilities and along with some alternatives. And what we ended up looking at was a community hydro project, which is sort of the same basic idea except with a couple of interesting twists that I think work well for the city. One of them is the fact that this, instead of sort of supporting a energy project X that could be anywhere potentially in the state, this is a project that is being, that is owned by Boralex Power, which has locations here in Glen's Falls, and Northern Power and Light, based up in Saranac Lake, which has some small hydro facilities. So this is up in Warrensburg, and it's actually, you know, local, locally or regionally owned, being used by local consumers like the residents and, in the case, in our case, the municipality of Glen's Falls. So it's supporting local businesses and local facilities. Another reason that we wanted to do this, of course, that like community solar, this will provide a discount on the, on the city's energy bill. We're estimating, there are actually some negotiations going on in New York State right now about how much credit you can get for these projects as community hydro. But we're looking at conservatively, probably somewhere in the vicinity of twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year. Right? And so the credits that will be on our bill. Another reason, of course, is that for those in the Sustainability Committee, of course, you're familiar with. We're looking at a number of different clean energy projects. And some of them include things like solar on our landfill. Because of the new laws that have been passed, particularly the IRA, the federal IRA, and the, the climate law, the New York State Climate Law, the CLCPA, we're not exactly sure what form those agreements might take. And because of that, we are sort of, we wanted to give ourselves some flexibility. So the nice thing about this community hydro project is that unlike a solar project, a community solar project, because they really want to get subscribers before they build these. They want long-term commitments. This really, we were able to do a very short-term commitment, which we could extend, but also gives us the flexibility should we decide to sort of go in a different direction once the, the landfill solar or the solar projects are done. Just as importantly, and maybe more importantly from some perspectives, that in addition to the city's discount on our energy bill, there's also, this particular program with Northern Power and Light will allow us to offer substantial, and by substantial, I mean about twenty-five percent discounts to low and moderate income residents of the city. And so we had a meeting earlier today with the representatives who are with me here from Northern Power and Light and from Boralex to sort of look at how we could sort of roll that out to make sure that people are aware of this and how this can help them. Because of course, you know, many folks have been in various times and places scammed by different kinds of energy things, and sometimes people aren't familiar with all the projects. But because this is actually something that we've already vetted, we can then use this and extend at a much larger scale, right? As far as the amount of discount, the credits that they can get to low and moderate income people. So these, these LMI community residents can get a twenty-five percent discount on their, on their electric bill. So I think, you know, we've, we've spent a lot of time sort of talking about this and looking at it, and I think this is really going to be wonderful. One final thing, of course, I think, you know, when we sort of looked at this opportunity, you know, Glen's Falls is historically a water seep, right? And we like to sort of, I think there's a great deal of pride on the basis of our, our location of that river and our reliance, the, our history on, on electric, hydroelectric power and the, the role of the river in sort of supporting this. So having these, these facilities to sort of maintain their viability at the same time, you know, suggesting to folks, you know, if you want to know where the city's getting their power, drive up to Warrensburg and you can see actually where the power is being accessed. So I think that's a, it's a great benefit all the way around.
Questions? Any questions for Jeff?
Well, I have one for you. Could you remind me what the total, our estimate was of savings from one year? We only signed a year because, like you said, we're working on solar. So we didn't want to get into a long-term contract in case the solar progresses.
Sure. You're actually talking about our energy procurement, which is our supply contract that we also did and for the same reason, right? So we, when we had to re-agree, had to come to a new agreement last year, we signed a one-year agreement because energy prices were very high, partly because of the Ukraine war, partly because of, of the economic malaise or, or hyperinflation, if you want to call it that. So we signed a contract that was about twelve and a half cents a kilowatt hour for our supply. We just also renewed that contract for one more year, and we got it down to about nine and a half cents. So we got about, just on our energy supply, notwithstanding this savings, we got about a twenty, twenty, close to twenty-five percent savings there. That would equate to roughly the same amount, say, probably thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars a year.
On top of this. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, folks.
Thank you. Not seeing any more public comment, no more, no more department heads. We'll go to committee report. Committee reports, Councilman Clark.
I have.
Councilman Dunn? After your meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Landry's not here. Councilman Palmer, committee report.
The Recreation Committee met last week. We were talking about something we could do to celebrate all of the work we're doing on our parks. And we were exploring the idea of having a basketball tournament at, because we put basketball courts at all of our parks and getting collaboration from the school, inviting maybe some of the other school districts, and giving out some medals for the award winners, and then having some sort of picnic at the end. So nothing's been decided, but we want to do something to kind of celebrate and invite everybody to enjoy all of the work we've been doing. So I know Tom Jordan is going to reach out to some of his contacts, and Hank Hilton reached out to someone about making medals and a discount for us. So just, just an idea. We're, we're looking into it.
Excellent.
And then for Building and Co., we, we haven't been meeting because of some of the changes in staffing. But we are thinking about continuing to move forward with the noise ordinance. And the reason for that is because we decided that the enforcement body for the noise ordinance would be the police department, not Building and Co.'s. So we don't really need all of the Building and Co.'s staff to be present in continuing to work on that. So after we receive comments from our, our attorney about the draft we have, we will meet again to see if we can continue moving forward with that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Dunn?
Sure. Wednesday the seventh, the Technology Committee met, and we got an update on our WISP. So I think we're going to take that one off the agenda now. We've had a meeting with the department heads and Orbital Fire. Just if anybody has any questions or concerns at this point, just reach out to them. We still need to get a, a station by all the city employees, including council members, that they're abiding by the WISP, but that'll be coming. We talked about cameras, and we had a presentation by a company called Turing. We went over that. We kind of got to a point with it. We sounded pretty much in favor as, as far as the body goes. But we wanted to make sure that we had the parks covered because we've invested over a million dollars into the parks, and we'd like to see those things, you know, we'd like to have security with those. We also got some kind of different things that we might be able to use in terms of watershed areas where they had like a solar power line and that would still upload to the clouds, so we'd be able to monitor from everywhere. And we had, Turing was saying that they would probably be able to get a demo together. And Hilton was at the meeting, and he, he suggested, he actually said a quest suggestion. It was for a same question, which then became a suggestion, of using a demo in the Eastfield Press Box because there's already power there and there's already Wi-Fi. So then we could use that, kind of take a look at that and test drive. So the next step for it is to walk through the parks sometime this week. That's what the chief was saying, but things may come up in the interim.
They actually did, just so you know, they, they did. Tom spent three hours with folks today touring all the parks. So they should have more information for us.
Okay. We also have an update on Seagull's fix, and that's kind of over to DPW and Water and Sewer Departments to make sure that they have everything covered in their workflows. And I did a little bit of follow-up with the cable franchise agreement. I actually spoke with Mike Williams today about that. And I'm trying to get an account for being able to review other cable franchise agreements over the past couple of years, and then I'll probably circulate that with the rest of the committee when I get that. And that is, I don't know. And we also had the Climate Smart Communities Task Force meeting on June seventh. And we discussed a timeline for solar from NICA, from when we have deliverables and dates against that, which runs from June through November first. It involves RSP mailing. We talked about the, our consultant for the Climate Smart Communities grant and just some stuff that we need to get from, from them to satisfy the state so that we get paid for the stuff that we're paying consultant for. We talked about the Better Buildings Challenge. And one of the, the goals of that is to lower carbon usage by fifty percent by 2030. That would also give us more points for things in Climate Smart Communities, but also for clean energy communities as well. Jeff talked about going to the ANCA conference and talked about deductive wind and solar grazing for, for our solar panels. And Josh told us about extra ten thousand dollars for campaigns focused to disadvantaged communities, which might be good for the water, the hydro community plan and other things that are in like the fourth ward and first ward. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Good?
The Special Projects Committee, we met on the sixth, and we continue to work on overnight parking. We did discuss, we have a hundred and twenty-seven responses from the survey that we discussed data about. We're still continuing to work on the fees, and we have some work to do, but we're almost there. We really are, but... And just, you know, the same things we've been working on, the wits on the streets, we got that now. So we know what streets that we could actually, will work for this overnight project, overnight parking project. And we're also looking for places for the downtown employees so that we're, we're going to have, working on designated streets for them to park. So we still have some work to do, but we're getting there. Now, it's no emergency, you know, we're just continuing to work on those things. So we'll be meeting again on Tuesday, June twentieth.
Thank you. Thank you. And so next up is voice vote. There are two resolutions. Either the council, like, pull any of those for discussion? Not hearing any.
How about the number fourteen?
That would be roll call vote.
Okay.
No, you're good. So under voice vote is just the two resolutions. So Resolution one is a resolution to approve the minutes of the May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three meeting of Glen's Falls County Council. And two is a resolution to approve the clerk's monthly and PvP report as attached.
It's a vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Under roll call vote, before I ask you, I would like to pull Resolution number four. They're not quite ready. The Friends of Coles Woods will have a project for you to approve soon. And then fourteen, there are, there was, it's a request for an encroachment permit, and I'm asking you to pull it so that we can go back to the property owner and ask him to amend his, to amend his plan in a way that would allow us to give a good consideration. Okay? And then number thirty, I would like to pull, and I've shared with you, redo of that resolution. The change to that resolution, thirty, from what you had. The only change to it is to remove Celtic attitudes from that, from that thing. And the reason is because Celtic attitudes is owned by me. This is a, this is part of the COVID relief grant funding program. And I want to make sure that Celtic attitudes, because I'm the mayor, that I fill out a conflict of interest waiver and make sure that HCR approves that before we, before I ask you to approve it. Okay? So those are the ones that I would like to pull. Are there any others that the council would like to pull? Not hearing any. Resolution three is a resolution to, under roll call vote, Resolution three. A resolution to decrease A one-one-nine-nine-zero-dash-nine-thousand contingent other funds by two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and five cents. An increase A five-six-nine-eight-nine-dash-four-four-seven-nine other contracted services by two thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and five cents. The city's share of development or improvement plan of Warren County Bike- The cities share the development for improvement plan of Warren County Bikeway and Veer Canal Trail. Four is poll. Five is a resolution to approve the City of Glens Falls Community Development annual payments in the amount of $15,863.95. Six is a resolution to approve and authorize the submission of the city's entitlement community development block grant, CBG for, uh, program year four annual plan fiscal year 2023 CBG program budget in the amount of six, uh, excuse me, $464,403 to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for review and approval. Seven is a resolution to approve proposed 2023 Warren County Fed Tax Application Awards. A 675204499 community support. Also included are approved 2023 general fund community support grants for review. Eight is a resolution to accept the lowest quote for removal of trees on the city tree removal list from High Peaks Tree Removal Queensberry, New York in the amount of $21,000. Nine is a resolution to extend the contract with gold engineering for a time and material not to exceed $24,000. Ten is a resolution to decrease budget line A 11990-9000 contingent other funds by $6,000 and increase line A 23410-2500 by other equip, other equipment by $6,000 to purchase and use ambulance medical stretcher from Troy Ambulance for the Glens Falls Fire Department. Eleven is a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Arcadis to cover grant application management services, detailed scope and cost to be approved and determined. Twelve is a resolution to approve encroachment permit renewal for Associates Glens Falls, 220 Glen Street, Glens Falls, New York, to construct a canopy on Glen Street facade of the building, 12 thou, 12 feet and four inches above the sidewalk and four feet and four, uh, six inches over the sidewalk, with the understanding the encroachment permit must be renewed annually. Thirteen is a resolution to approve encroachment permit for renewal of Rodici Kitchen and Bar, 26 Ridge Street, Glens Falls, to, to, uh, to place refuse containers in City Alleyway at the rear end of the building from June 3rd, June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, with the understanding encroachment permit must be renewed on a annual basis. Fourteen is the poll. Fifteen is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit renewal for Fowler Building Associates LLC, 190 Glen Street, to place a high-quality string of LED streetlights, uh, between the 184 Glen Street and the 190 Glen Street buildings, Exchange Street Plaza, at a height of about 16 feet above grade, June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, with the understanding that the encroachment permit must be renewed annually. Sixteen is a resolution to approve encroachment permit for Kristen Ott and Jennifer Ferris, DBA Shop the Ladies, 206 Glen Street, Glens Falls, for the placement of a sandwich board on the sidewalk in front of 206 Glen Street from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, in compliance with Proag regulations to allow for pedestrian access to the sidewalk. Seventeen is a resolution to approve an encroachment permit for Kristin Ott, Jennifer, Jennifer Ferris, DBA Shop the Ladies, 206 Glen Street, for the placement of a clothing rack on the sidewalk in front of 206 Glen Street from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, in compliance with Proag regulations to allow pedestrian access to the sidewalk. Eighteen is a resolution to approve encroachment permit renewal for Northeastern Fine Jewels, 167 Glen, Glen Street, Glens Falls, for the placement of a sandwich board on the sidewalk in front of 167 Glen Street from June 1st, 2023 to May 31st, 2024, in compliance with Proag regulations to allow for pedestrian access to the sidewalk. Nineteen is a resolution to approve encroachment permit renewal for Grove, 18 Exchange Street, Glens Falls, for the placement of a sandwich board at the end of Exchange Street near Glen from 2000, or, excuse me, from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, in compliance with Proag regulations and for public access on the sidewalk. Twenty is a resolution to approve encroachment permit for Associates of Glens Falls, 220 and 228 Glen Street, Glens Falls, for the placement of a sandwich board on the city sidewalk from June 1st, 2023 through May 31st, 2024, in compliance with Proag regulations and public access on the sidewalk. Twenty-one is a resolution to approve encroachment permit two, for 206 Glen Street LLC, PO Box 930, Glens Falls, to place a trash dumpster in front of 206 Glen Street and two parking spaces from June 19th, 2023 through June 23rd, 2023, in compliance with Proag regulations and public access on the sidewalk. Twenty-two is an approved, two, a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application renewal from the Rotary Club of Glens Falls, PO Box 2702, Glens Falls, to operate a mobile food unit in Crandall Park on July 3rd, 2023 through the, uh, for the Fourth of July celebration on September 21st to 24th, 2023, for the Adronic Balloon Festival and on September 30th, 2023 for Vet Fest as attached. Twenty-three is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application renewal from Queensberry and Desadeque Lodge, 121 Burke Drive, Glens, uh, Queensberry, New York, for a one-week mobile food unit license to vend at the Adronic Balloon Festival in Crandall Park from September 21st to the 24th, 2023. Twenty-four is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application for renewal of Laura Mason, DBA, the Mason Jar, 2009 Meadow Street, Johnstown, New York, to vend from June 17th to the 18th for the Larrak Arts Festival in City Park. Twenty-five is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application renewal from Laura Mason, DBA, the Mac Factor, in, uh, 209 Meadow Street, Johnstown, New York, to vend June 17th to the 18th for the Larrak Arts Festival in City Park. Twenty-six is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application renewal for a weekly license from Edward Brandt, A, uh, DBA Adronic Concessions, 116, uh, 1116 County Road, Highway 122, Glover's Road, to operate a mobile food unit for June 17th and the 18th, 2023, for the Larrak Arts Festival in City Park and on July 3rd, 2023 for Glens Falls Symphony Concert in Crandall Park and for the September 21st to the 24th for the Adronic Balloon Festival in Crandall Park as attached. Twenty-seven is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application for Michael Negro, a DBA Green Mountain, uh, concessions, 125 Holt Street, Bennington, Vermont, to vend on June 17th and the 18th, uh, uh, 2023 for the Larrak Arts Festival in City Park. Twenty-eight is a resolution to approve a mobile food unit license application renewal for Richard Wright, DKA Sugar Shakers, in, uh, 7406 Turkey Road, uh, Turkey Creek Road, Plant City, Florida, to then June 17th and 18th, 2023, for the Larrak Arts Festival in City Park. Uh, Resolution 29, authorizes the mayor execute a community subscriber agreement with Northern Power and Light. Thirty is polled. Thirty-one is a resolution to declare the City of Glens Falls Lead Agency for secret requirement for the proposed electrical system upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant project. Thirty-two is a resolution to declare Glens Falls the Lead Agency for secret requirement for the proposed Washington Street Stormwater, Stormwater Storage Project. Thirty-three is a resolution to declare the City of Glens Falls Lead Agency for the secret requirement for the proposed water distribution system improvements project. Thirty-four is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
So moved.
Roll call vote? Oh, excuse me, second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Donnie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapp?
Yes.
Councilman Lapp?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapp?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And Resolution 30, again, um, we'll hold it for a roll call vote. The resolution is just the top piece. And the number 30 is, is the, um, full background to the resolution. And it, it is the only change from what you had before is the removal of Celtic attitudes code. So a resolution to authorize the Controller's Office reimburse approved grantees in the Small Business Recovery Fund New York State Program as funds are made available to the city by, by New York State. Park and Elm Restaurant, $30,000, Craft on a Night, $30,000, New Way Lunch for $6,842.65. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Donnie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapp?
Yes.
Councilman Lapp?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lapp?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Uh, old business, Councilman Clark?
I have none.
Councilman Donnie?
I have none.
Councilwoman, um, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Lapp?
Um, I was just, uh, curious with the, uh, bed tax application awards. I know there was somebody who had, uh, applied for it. Do, do we have like a list of people who apply? Is it, you know, is that something, um, that, uh, that we, we, uh, share with the community? When somebody applies and doesn't get funding?
We, we never have in the, in the process. What we've done is, um, we put out an application and, um, asked any not-for-profits in the city or, excuse me, um, anybody in the city if they, I believe all the applicants are for not-for-profits. But it's bed tax dollars. We put out an application, uh, they fill it out and we, um, then if you approve this list, these people will be, um, will be approved. And it, um, then everybody will get an award letter and anybody who didn't will get a formal decla, declination letter and explain, um, why. The only, um, application that was, was, um, not approved was, um, for a, um, an incomplete applicant. Um, it was an application for a, um, for mural garden and for a mural event, um, excuse me, a mural fest. Um, both seem like they'd be great projects and applicable for funding, but neither one, the one, um, was not, uh, the, it's, the planning board has had done sketch plan review, I think, but has not approved the mural garden as a project. And then also for the, um, the application asked for, uh, mural fest, didn't give any real information of the date. We don't have it on a calendar. It's not been, um, anything that we looked at. And so we need to go back to them and help them because we'd like to approve everyone. We most always do. Um, never though in everybody's application, we almost never approve for the amounts because we just don't get that much money. But, um, we certainly will do that and I could, we can change that process any way you guys feel appropriate.
I, I think that it would be helpful to have a little bit of guidance on, on how we're to be approving, um, these applications.
Sure. Any, any suggestions you have, we can, we can adjust. Absolutely. Yeah. I'm, uh, my goal is that as we work on our budget for the 2023, that we, um, almost all of the not-for-pro, uh, the, all the agencies that get this money were all funded separately on budget lines through not-for-profits for the City of Glens Falls. During the 2008 financial crisis, most of them got cut. And then later during Mayor Hall's administration, the county changed its policy and started to give the City of Glens Falls some funding. And we immediately, the mayor, um, and, um, formed a subcommittee, um, looked at that and tried to replace, punish that. You can tell by looking at it that they were trying to bring people back to the, to the, um, funding levels that they were. And I think we've done that, but that was using all the stuff. So I think it's a great conversation about the whole process, um, to have and, and think about the budget and, and maybe use the, the bed tax dollars literally for events as opposed to, you know, these, uh, agencies that were giving much more of the money aren't necessarily all event driven, um, like the symphony, right? We, um, but, um, it's all for you guys to, to provide and book and change it any way you'd like. Fair enough.
Yep.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman, woman Dunn? Old business, Councilman Dunn?
Um, I just want to, um, just thank everyone that came out for the, um, quick word meeting, our first meeting. It was, I thought it was a good success. We had to get out more chairs, so that made me feel good. And we did have a good conversation and they, Kate, you know, she's wonderful. And Jim and Buddy. It was wonderful, shot black. And it was, I was really, um, really happy with the turnout and the people that came. I think they were, they felt a lot better. So thank you guys so much.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, let's see, then new business, Councilwoman Clark?
I have new business.
Councilman Donnie?
No, nothing.
Councilwoman Palmer?
I do have some new business. Um, I'm, I'm, I'd like to address the council regarding an opportunity the city has to seek funding to update our comprehensive plan. Uh, a comprehensive plan is a basis for planning, zoning and informed decision-making for our city. It allows us to make decisions today guided by forethought about our city's future and the best interest of all our residents. And in fact, uh, according to the Department of State, New York requires that zoning changes be adopted in accordance with a well-considered comprehensive plan. Our current plan is from 2003. Um, I'd like all of you to consider how much Glens Falls has grown and changed since 2003. Does it make any sense for us to be making decisions or for our zoning or planning boards to be making decisions based off of a totally outdated plan? Furthermore, because the plan is so outdated, it is likely the case that decisions are being made without consulting it because it's not very relevant. One reason that municipalities like us may put off updating their comprehensive plans is because they're expensive. Um, we're concerned about paying for them. Luckily, right now, there is current funding from the Department of State, which covers 90% of the costs. It is not usual to have a, a grant program with only a 10% match. The grant, um, will save us a tremendous amount of money considering the comprehensive plans cost upwards of $100,000. In addition, if we are able to get this grant, we will then be eligible to apply for funds in the next consolidated funding application to update our zoning regulations, which we all know we would love to do. I am bringing this to you tonight because the grant applications are due next month. Lobella has given us a proposal to apply for this grant for $5,000. They need authorization from the council to start the process as soon as possible if we hope to get it in by the due date. I bring this up tonight in order for our community not to miss out on an opportunity, an opportunity that would financially benefit the city and fulfill our responsibilities and governance. The deadline for this to happen is too near not to take action. Delay brings unnecessary risk to a reward that will benefit us all. And I ask the council for support on this issue tonight so tomorrow we can breathe easier knowing that we are on a responsible path forward. Um, so I would like to introduce a resolution related to this. Um, and I'm going to read it and I have copies for you. Let's see. I'll give you this when I've done reading. Okay. So whereas the Department of State has made available $2 million to fund applications for the Smart Growth Community Planning and Zoning Grant Program, and whereas the City of Glens Falls is an eligible applicant and the application must include a letter or resolution which demonstrates the municipal consent and support for the application that's set forth in the request for applications. Whereas the project budget to prepare a comprehensive plan update is approximately $150,000, the program requires that state assistance shall not exceed 90% of the total eligible project cost. The grant requires, uh, request would be for $135,000 and the city would be required to provide a $15,000 match. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor or who is designee of the City of Glens Falls, New York is hereby authorized as official representative of the city to execute and submit a consolidated funding application for Smart Growth Community Planning and Zoning Grant Program funding request of $135,000 to the Administrative Agency for the Federal Fiscal Year 2023 Program. All understanding and assurances contained therein and is hereby directed and authorized to act in connection with the submission of the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. And be it further resolved that upon funding a set amount, the City of Glens Falls commits to contribute $15,000 in cash toward the project specified in the grant application. So I'd like to ask for a, a vote on this resolution, but also if anyone wants to discuss it or has any... but also if anyone wants to discuss it or has any thoughts.
I, I'd just like to add to what Diana has said that since the time of the last, um, comprehensive plan, um, we've, we've, uh, encountered climate change, we have, uh, ubiquitous smartphones, uh, we've gone through a pandemic, uh, we are, uh, you know, just functionally speaking, this would be something that we could use to help us map out what we want to do with short-term rentals. Um, and all these things require kind of looking at what you're doing for zoning, looking at what you're doing for, you know, uh, planning in general. Uh, where, where the previous plan was looking for, uh, Fortune five hundred companies to move their campus into Glen's Falls, and that's not something that's in our, our vision whatsoever. Um, I, I've said before to the mayor how I thought it was really important that we go for, forward with a comprehensive plan. I think the, the opportunity's great with having a ninety percent match from the state.
And just one thing I forgot to add is that, you know, part of the process of developing a comprehensive plan which would be paid for if we got this grant is public outreach. So this would allow citizens of Glen's Falls to have a say in what the future vision is for our community. And I think as their representatives, we should support that. Uh, it's important because if we are making decisions without a plan to guide us, we may not be making cohesive, uh, decisions that are in the best interest of our city and the residents that live here.
I, so I don't see anything in the resolution here saying authorizing that we're paying the five thousand dollars. It states it, but it doesn't state this in the resolution.
Yeah.
Fifteen thousand?
Uh, fifteen thousand dollars is the, is the match that, um,
If we get the grant.
If we get the grant, which we have to apply for. Um, and then Lobella has told us separately that our fee, if we choose to do this, would be five thousand dollars.
To, to fill up the application on our behalf?
Yeah.
Put it on the, um, the, um, sorry.
But this doesn't commit us to use Lobella if we get the grant?
No, it, it actually doesn't.
No, that's what I mean. I haven't answered your question. It doesn't commit us.
This resolution is written.
Does it, does it, um, does it prove the five thousand dollars?
No.
No.
That's what I was looking for. Should we?
No, I think the point is this is committing us to apply for the grant.
No, but we got to commit the money to spend. We got to spend the five thousand dollars, and we need to allocate the five thousand dollars to do this project.
We, we can also do that.
We, we have to do that. We, we have to take it from contingency here some other place in the budget and put it in some place in the budget.
I'm sure.
There's no reason the resolution doesn't include the five thousand dollars.
This resolution was written by Lobella. They gave us this resolution, um, as they sent it to the mayor to meet him.
And have a meeting with them tomorrow?
Yeah. The problem about, about waiting though is that the grant application is due and we need to give them time.
Or to do it.
To do it, probably.
My hesitation's been that I have not been, we were contracting with Lobella on a couple of the projects that aren't. I, I don't, um, I, I, I want to make sure that they follow through. I also want to make sure that, um, that they're the right company for the job. We had a meeting with them scheduled for tomorrow anyway to work on some of the other projects. So that's why, um, I'm not putting the resolution forward, but it's okay. If you decide to do it, I certainly would consider. I'm, um, Lobella is a good company. Um, there are, there are things that I, um, I had some concerns, but none that would make me stand in, in opposition to this. I just wasn't bringing it to you because I haven't met with them yet.
Yeah, it's just that we can't really wait.
We might not. We might miss out, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to commit us into it. And I know that they're, um, very much hoping, um, because I've had conversations with them in the past, that they be the award, um, winners. And I, I, I'm not ready to make that commitment, so.
Is another mayor, has any other, uh, eight, uh, organizations come forward about this to us?
No, no, but I haven't talked to me. We have seven different applications in water, or six different applications in water, and two of them are using a different company to put, to fill out those applications for the unified funding, um, application. And then Jeff mentioned another, I think there's one or two more projects that Jeff and Pat have been, so. No, I, I haven't. But I have had conversations with, um, Councilwoman Palmer about and understand her, her desire. I have with Councilwoman Lappo. I understand his desire. I wouldn't even go further about their statements. They're, they're both correct that the last com- the last planning, uh, the comprehensive plan, um, for the city is over twenty years old, but it was even, even to go any further. It was never adopted. It was completed and wasn't adopted.
It is referenced in, in many different grant applications that the city has made, so it's.
Yeah. Fair enough. I, I just was trying to agree with the fact that we need a, a comprehensive plan. There's no debate about that. Question is if you want to go, if you're, if you feel compelled that, that, um, that this is it and you want to approve this, uh, resolution, we can. I would, it would certainly, um, I think that we should mention the five thousand dollars, although does it count if we don't say from one fund to another?
No, I mean, we, we can authorize that in our, in our next council meeting if we need to, but this would allow us to say, yes, we're going to, to apply for this grant and not hold us up on doing that work if for some reason you wish to give that work to someone else, you could.
Okay. Sure.
The application should do what you like to do.
Yeah. Well, that's the, that's the reason there is it. Uh, it's a legitimate, um, uh, legitimate concern because they have to write it, and it's, it's a, it's a bear of a thing to write. So I appreciate it. If you want to pass this, I, if my meeting goes well tomorrow and we hear the things we want to hear, I'm all for, um, moving forward, especially with the application process, right? We, go ahead.
The resolution is just to make applications, right? It doesn't say that we're using Lobella.
Right. So for some reason, we, I, I didn't, like, I'd always, uh, we could try to find somebody else quickly right away and write it, but I also, I don't, uh, my concerns with them aren't grave. I don't wish to, um, I, I don't wish to overstate them. They're just the reason that I, I wasn't bringing this to you until I met with them. Is that I, please, I, I want to be clear because, um, they are, we, we are using them successfully in a way. So if you guys are comfortable with this resolution, I am. It's just wanted you to be aware of what the, what the thing is.
So the resolution is to commit to making an application for the grant, and if you are awarded the grant, you are committing to spending the fifteen thousand.
Right.
It does not say that you are using Lobella to make the grant application. That would have to be a separate resolution and a legal date.
So, but it allows, so they're recommending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We might take a hundred and fifty.
Right. Next, and, and the ninety, I was unclear too, although I, I, the, the representative from Lobella is stating that it's ninety percent funded. If I understand it correctly, and I don't, that's why tomorrow's meeting is so important, but it could be up to ninety percent. It could also be less. I don't know. Uh, it, maybe I'm wrong, and that's, you, you think it's guaranteed ninety percent if it's approved?
I, I think that we may not get the amount that we're asking for, but it's a ninety-ten match. Um, and I think that, and I think that some of the reason, um, to apply for the amount is because the cost of the grant will also cover, um, grant administration and consulting services for people to work on, uh, implementing the work of the grant.
I'm sure. Yes.
So, so it pays for the plan and all the public outreach and all of those things.
I'm sorry?
Can you move on to this resolution?
I don't, no, uh, no, I just, um. Would someone like to make a motion to, to this?
So moved. Who made, who made, Diana made the motion?
I made a motion.
I made the motion yesterday. Yes.
I made a motion.
Oh, second.
Would this be a roll call vote, a voice call?
Roll call, roll call.
Do we have a motion for a roll call?
No, she already made a motion.
Sorry.
Yeah, so it's just always.
Councilman Large Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Downey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Councilwoman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, mayor, for your comments, too.
Appreciate it. Um, and other, uh, new business, Diana?
That's it.
Uh, yeah, um, Councilwoman Lappo, new business?
Something jotted down. I think I did.
Thank you. New business, Councilwoman Gooden?
I have no new business.
Great. I have no new business. Um, and I believe we have a motion to adjourn. I just wanted to make sure. Public comments, thank you. Um, if there's anybody that'd like to address the council, please come to the mic. Peter, do we have anybody online? I got you. Nobody, nobody had any public comments. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
On adjourn? Thank you.